All right, first thing.
Justin Kitchell.
Stevens. Myself, Tim. All right, first thing. Hearing first?
Yeah, let's do the public hearing first.
Okay.
If you guys want, I can just give a quick overview of where we're at at this point. No need to make public comment. So. We had a. A rate study completed a few months back with the main intentions of. We wanna, we know we need to rehab our water storage tank. It's a smaller than seventy-five thousand gallon tank. We've had engineer estimates come in at four hundred thousand dollars. And so we looked at how we could fund this thing. So that's kind of what this rate study is all about. And. As you can see. So kind of this left column is where our rates currently are. And this kind of option one is what we have presented for us tonight. And this will generate funds to be able to pay for that tank rehab within a three-year time period. So you all do have a copy of the rate ordinance. We've got our meter deposits listed on there, hundred and fifty dollars, ten dollar transfer fee, twenty-five dollar reconnect fee. Tap fees are thirteen hundred dollars or the actual cost, cost incurred. Then we have kind of those minimum rate charges. Again, that's based off of twenty-five hundred gallons. And then we have the per thousand gallon rates. So you're charged fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents per thousand for your first five thousand. And it's progressively less rate as you use more. And then the cost of the summer meters has increased for us. So we're also proposing to increase that to hundred and eighty-five dollars per summer meter. So that we're not losing money on that. That's all I have unless you guys have any specific questions you want me to go over or over the public.
Um, okay. Meter deposits, are you talking about customer deposits?
Yeah, for the, the new customer.
Because we had two different, we had like a hundred dollars for renters. And we have maybe five for property owners. So you're just gonna have a hundred fifty for both?
I think that was, we're only changing one there. That's fifty-one oh-two. Let me double check what we got because we're not changing everything unless we're touching that specific section. Then it won't be impacted. Let me, let's double check after we. So see that is. So that's customers seeking for commercial businesses. So then the owners and renters will not change. Is that?
Oh, okay.
That's on record.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just.
Specific target and change.
Just this is.
That's right.
Okay, just so I understand it.
Are there any other questions up here? Otherwise I'll take comments if anybody has any comments.
I had a question. You said that this is a repair for the school. Is that the small water tower?
Yeah.
Given the size of the town, is it necessary to have two water towers? She needs to stay permanent, oh, just in the loading.
Yes, it's good to have redundancy because if something ever happens to one, we can take the line online, do cleaning, repair, maintenance without it. I'll shut hold down now. Sure, that's one benefit.
Okay.
And then I think it's, you're supposed to have a hundred and twenty-five percent of like your daily use. You're supposed to have in storage.
Okay.
So we do actually need that just based off of our, I mean, it's recommended for how much water we use.
Any other comments on the water?
Oh, I have a question. How long these things of repair will last? Like, given you do this rehab, what's the timeline on the next time your renters do a rehab?
We have to get fifteen, twenty years.
Sorry, that just doesn't seem like a long span.
It's not, unfortunately. There, so once you do the major rehab.
Yeah.
You can, you can kind of repaint again and you can get, you know, another ten years and it's not supposed to cost as much.
Right.
But probably at that time, depending on what position found then, I mean, might be looking at a new tank.
Right.
So, I mean, hopefully, hopefully it could really get twenty-five, but maybe fifteen, twenty time will have more effect. I believe, I believe we can close the public hearing. And then we'll have the ordinance present for approval later on on this agenda.
All right, at this time then, if there's no other comments, I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to other business. Uh, we need approval of the June ninth executive session minutes, uh, June nineteenth executive session minutes, July eighth executive session minutes, and the June ninth regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the June ninth regular executive session meetings, the June nineteenth executive session, and the July eighth executive session.
I'll second that.
May the best, you said, and the Jerry, all the way.
Aye.
Yes, Rod, do you have?
Firstly, I'd like to thank the town council from three years ago for providing the opportunity to have the most street location. Uh, I regret we're not able to complete the work that we started within the three-year time span. And that there are some questions about the work in general. So I'd like to just read through this. So I got the town manager's report and as I read through it, I think that there are some contextual issues where incorrect conclusions and observations are gone. Number one, permits. When I took possession of the building, I was asked the then-town manager if I needed permits for the work. She said no. I asked the Dearborn County Building Inspector the same question when he came and gave the green ticket for the electric. He said no, after I outlined what I was planning. He made a visit in April of twenty twenty-five at my request that was not documented, but he was in the building. And I asked him again and he said the same thing. I did not need permits for any of the work I was doing. So since, although I don't have it in writing, both of the town manager at the time and the Dearborn County Building Inspector were in agreement. So I took them at their word and did not look for permits for any of the work I did. That doesn't mean I wasn't going to if I needed them for the bathroom, but to this point, that's not done any better. I mentioned this to the current town manager who ignored my statement and listed it as one of the failures in the document. As a side note, no contractor that worked on the building ever asked for a permit, not the HVAC, not the drywall, not the, um, plumbing. Speaking of the plumbing, HVAC, and drywall, all the plumbing, HVAC, so the furnace, air conditioning, and the drywall work, with the exception of the walls downstairs, were done by Mike Stallings contractors. The town manager pointed out some inconsistencies there, so I would suggest that. If things have been haphazardly installed, we might want to talk to the contractor they've done, have the work in the city. I would also guess that basements of buildings that are a hundred and fifty years old, that are being completely renovated with brand-new plumbing, brand-new HVAC, probably look like crap in the basement where nobody goes in yet. Many of the questionable workmanship items are due to the fact that the renovation is not complete. Installation of the I-beams in the basement isn't finished. It needs to be shinned and it needs to have brackets supplied. Those aren't done yet. Something that would have been done before any light weight was present, i.e. coffee shop. Wiring switches not installed. Yep, I just finished painting. I removed a whole bunch of wiring for, uh, switches and plugs in order to do the painting without getting paint on it. I'm looking back. However, if the town manager had tested any outlet in the building, which he did not, he would have found that every outlet in the building worked and was grounded. Any exposed wire would have disconnected and turned off at the breaker. The breakers in the proposed kitchen are turned off. Kitchen works just fine. It was just one of those things. Comments were made about one of the upstairs offices. It's a break room. It's a training room. At no time, including myself, anyone lived there or ever spent the night with. When I explained that, the town manager included that comment in there as well. Room is used as an equipment testing area and the POS system that I had purchased was there in the room, along with a large monitor, computer, keyboard, etc. The outside, the yard is mowed every Friday or Saturday, depending on weather. Plants that were present during the inspection had sprung up after days and days of rain. The area in question is ten feet back from the building between a very, too narrow, a narrow area between the two buildings, the building and the neighbor's home. And it suggests that the outside was not well-maintained. It's just plain not true. In fact, when the building was continually being flooded because of poor drainage, I took it upon myself to get conduit, connect all of the drains, and move the water away from the building. Because I had water flooding in and I had shown you that video in a previous session. I also covered the walkway into the basement to prevent water from flowing in as it had done for decades. And that has pretty much stopped all the water in the basement, except for when it really, really rains. Apparently, there's a broken drainage under the basement, which the town is set there to not repair. Unfinished spaces. Yep, there is a bunch. I didn't get the work done. The renovation is ongoing, but incomplete. Finally, the requirement to be open. Contrary to the town manager's report, the building hasn't been opened for the requisite hours over the past three years. The entrance door is unlocked during the day and a banner indicating the business upstairs has been in the window since day one. In fact, if you go to Google Street View, you can see it in the window. Visitors, clients, vendors, delivery people, and curious neighbors have all access to the building during this time. So while I'm sure that none of this will change the outcome, and frankly, I'm not looking to change the outcome, so you can stop or develop that. I felt it important to see some of the text and images from the report in context. I did not appreciate some of the off-the-cuff and incorrect statements in the official report. And I wanted to provide context for you. Finally, in case my commitment to open a coffee shop was ever in doubt, I have in storage the following. Nine restaurant-quality tables, thirty-eight restaurant chairs, leather couches, along with all the coffee equipment, grinders, caraps, cups, lids, and espresso machine. I have custom stickers and luggage bags. I have all the flooring and the lighting to finish out the first floor. I have all the wood and hardware for all of the cabinet triggerings we made. I have a point-of-sale system, a tax ID, a business license, and a bank account, all in the name of Dillsboro Coffee Company. I've had open houses, visitors, and I have hundreds of people on an email list, eighty-two percent of whom opened my last email, which is outrageously huge, given my marketing. To say I was committed to opening a coffee shop, I think is an understatement. Thank you for your time tonight and the opportunity that the building presented for my business. I only regret not being able to finish what I started. As I wrote to the town manager and the chairman of the council, I will vacate the building as demanded in letter dated June and teen, leaving it tens of thousands of dollars better than I told you.
I was here for that.
Well, yeah, I got you. We'll talk about the fuel agreement, get that approved, and then the, um, the, the votes on doing.
If you want to add a couple things. Introduce, introduce myself. David Fowles, the EMS tracker for Aurora EMS. Been doing EMS next year, be eighteen years. Been with Aurora for almost fifteen. Um, just where I really started taking a passion with the administrative side of stuff, trying to do more and just take calls, help, help different positions down there. Really happy to be out here in Dillsboro, helping guys out. Thank you to the community out here, being so welcoming to all of us, our careers. They say every time they're out, somebody stops them. So really excited to be out here finally to help. Looked at some numbers, they've done nine hundred and twenty calls for service this year. Two hundred and sixty of one of those have been out here in Dillsboro. Uh, our responder five unit has done a hundred and five calls out here since its inception on April the twenty-first. And it looks like our average response time from call to on scene is about four minutes and nineteen seconds. So I feel like it's really helping things out. You know, we have, uh, here in the middle of town, about twelve, thirteen minutes for us. We're cooking down fifty. I know you guys all heard about the cardiac arrest thing last month.
Yep.
It's very awesome that somebody was there to provide quick CPR, our unit was on scene in less than two minutes to provide defibrillation.
We are very thankful.
And that's.
One of our best friends.
Is she?
Yes, she is.
Hey, that's why I heard that, you know, not that that's a great thing that happened enough, but just the fact that we're here and we respond.
If you weren't here, she would not be.
Well, that's what I think. That comes from Aurora.
Yeah.
You know, so that.
We're very, very thankful to you.
It really like hit home what it's out here for. Um, you know, what's, what it's accomplishing out here. So, um, we're not only trying to be here just to help provide EMS services. We try to be present in the community also since we've been here. That's why I wanted to be in the parade. We participated in the bike giveaway and so, so we want to do more than just be stationed at our house. Anything we can do to help be involved in the community out here too. You know, we're more welcome to come to and help out.
We're glad you asked.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heaven.
We could go through the stuff I have for EMS first. It's out of, I think, you got another meeting to get to? So we've talked about the fuel use agreement quite a bit already. I think we've all kind of maybe formally okayed that. Uh, you all should have a copy of that. Um, but I would like to just go ahead and put that on record. And I know Aurora EMS has kind of approved it on their end. We've just, we've not had a meeting since we've kind of had that directed. Um, and that's a, it's a very kind of simple agreement. Um, just as it, you know, they can use our onsite fuel tanks for the purposes related to their emergency response. And that they agree to record each fuel transaction using the documentation provided in the concrete disaster. They put, you know, the date, uh, how many gallons is pumped and just some real basic information. And then I proposed that we'll bill them on a quarterly basis based off of what they've used. And we'll build them at the rate of our most recent, um, uh, rate that we purchased the fuel for from Long Island Valley. And then it would just renew annually unless any party gave thirty-day permission notes.
I have a question on that. I mean, since, uh, I'm a motion to approve. The documents are in. I'll make a motion to approve the fuel usage agreement as outlined on the document. Second minute, I'll say. Seven, they were.
Aye.
Yeah, go on then, um. Um, so we've been receiving quotes for a, I've been meeting with contractors for a forty-by-forty full barn, um, with three bays. One would be a large drive-through, twelve-foot doors. They would partially be allowed for the fire department to use. And I could, I've got some of the, a lot of these quotes have, um, they've got kind of depictions that they've included. So. So this is kind of what we expect. This, this side would be facing the alley, this side would be facing western row. Um, so nothing too crazy. This isn't even for concrete floor. This is no, um, electric. So I'm thinking we're probably gonna have fifteen, twenty thousand additional costs on top of, on top of that to kind of really get it ready. Um, I, so I've talked, I think I've asked like five or six companies, I've shared the documents, five of which responded with pricing. Uh, they've kind of referenced in different, different terms. Uh, Manchester Metals was the cheapest. They came in at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. The only thing that gave me a little bit of hesitation is they had some terms in there that, um, reference being governed by and construed according to the laws of the state of Missouri. I don't even know if we could work with that, John. I don't know if you've got concern with language like that being within the contractor's foot or not.
I don't know.
Got to pull up the actual.
The laws of Missouri.
Oh. And I thought, I mean, it might be worth while fast if they'd be willing to just put Indiana, um.
I think it's worth asking that question. I seen that's where they're out of and that's why they want to be governed by a contract. It's not the end of the world. If we like the deal, it's the only thing we can do. Sure, since they're gonna build it here and all that, this is they'd be willing to make that change.
Um, but, but I mean, I think for the most part, with the exception of one, the pricing was, you know, relatively consistent. So I think that's probably about the price we're gonna pay for, um, that type of structure I did. Um, ask if they'd be completed by the end of October. Um, I know Aurora EMS, they really need the building there, um, by the time the weather starts breaking for them. So that they aren't having medicine and such go bad and that sort of thing. Yeah, you're close.
I mean, for manufacturers, it's actually not all that unusual to have that kind of language in contract. Since they're building here though, they might need to change. There's not, I'm guessing there's not a substantial difference between these commercial-type laws. It's worth asking a question. But if we like the deal and we're solid with the building, you think, you think they're good and they don't want to make that change, I. I don't think that's the end of the world. I think our level in court might have been just look at what the laws of Missouri are.
Yeah.
But it has happened. That's exactly what choice of law means. You know, we, we tried in Indiana, the laws of Missouri. I noticed, do they have a jurisdiction thing though?
They put arbitration in Ripley County.
Yes, arbitration's in Ripley County and they try to limit us to the, if arbitration fails and they try to limit us to the, to the Missouri courts. I think they wouldn't do arbitration in Ripley County. I bet they'll change it.
Yeah, this is. Fair, that section.
I, I would just ask them to change the arbitrated here and we use an arbitrary, but it doesn't make a lot of sense. And if they, but, uh, it says by those laws, but it doesn't say that they don't, they don't attempt to limit jurisdiction to Missouri. So I, I think you might find they'll, they'll make a change.
There's some, someone that's in the previous contract.
My guess is the previous contract. It's, I don't think that contract, which is formed contract, they didn't opt it out there. You didn't see that.
But probably the harder part is gonna be how we all agreed to pay for this thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I floated the idea of hospital lease agreements with Aurora EMS and the fire department. We didn't really go over it. We didn't have much discussion other than I've kind of suggested that as an idea. I've talked with our township trustee, you know, he's willing to throw some money in it. Um, he hasn't given me a formal answer, but I got the impression maybe around twenty thousand. So I mean, that's a pretty good chunk. But like I said, but if we. If we could wait on concrete, um, we're obviously gonna need electric though. So I mean, I think we should plan on probably seventy-five thousand. But I don't know which. Well, I don't know how we want to go about this. I don't know if we want to propose something to Aurora EMS and the fire department. If you guys are willing to put anything in on this or we want to talk about this separately at some point. But we're starting to get a better idea of what it's gonna cost us.
We'd have to discuss something in the next meeting. Jack, I was telling you, I might see private monthly lease on that.
Yep.
Just was, you know, some changes with county. We're not gonna be here.
Right.
Then that, just something that we feel we have, we're supposed to get ninety days notice if something happens. So.
Right.
Doesn't, you, I just.
I mean, I'm sure that would be, I mean, I'm not a council, so we gotta call that.
Whether like work is so much more, does that cost them?
I think their money just due to higher quality, their, or probably product. You know, and I, I do know, um, some of them, they would put things like they weren't gonna do a site work. You know, we did, I did ask them to put, uh, all this and gravel, um, so we could have a way to get around the building. Cause right now, um, the way it's proposed is, um, you know, the recycling trailer just drives through where they wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, the building would take out the back part of that gravel. So we, you know, there's some of them, whereas Manchester Metals, they, they include in their quote, uh, I could just put that driveway around. It's definitely the cheaper price as far as their oil or anything else. I haven't looked much into that yet.
As far as, as far as the driveway, some, that's something just to have to do. No emergency on anything.
Right.
Yeah, let's save some money.
Yeah, be rough his first job.
You're ready, huh?
So a lot we want to do. Have a, some kind of special meeting or something after you talk to the fire department about it or whatever.
Yeah, I think wait, our next meeting is until August.
August, so after August, we'll try to set up some kind of special meeting made with that township trustee and.
Some of these kids are only coming in for sixty days.
Yeah, some of them, I think I saw sixty on a couple.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we're, I don't think we should wait around too much. We're, we're not gonna be helping them out.
Can you do a special meeting? I don't look over these anyways, just because it's the cheapest doesn't mean that.
Right.
Right.
You know.
Isn't Manchester Metals Joe Burdette?
I think so.
I'm pretty sure it is.
It is.
Yeah.
That's Joe, man.
Sorry, I'm almost positive.
But I think he's got that at all places now.
Yep. Used to be Burdette over.
Yeah, yeah.
He did our barn. We don't have an issue with it, but it's not the greatest. We've not had an issue, but I'll just say it's not. And ours is a step down from a four by four eight, so.
Yeah. I mean, I was kind of happy to see that we had some quotes that are pretty much in the same range. I think they're in, you know. Both of them are awesome, that.
Basically, you can have a special meeting, whatever, try to get some. Draw a, we're gonna get it a little, get in here a little sooner and kind of get something done. So if you have a meeting, then he can get with you. You can set up a special meeting for us and we can all get together and try to decide.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I personally, I mean, I think it's, we have to use the riverboat funds to help out and with the EMS. I think it's my goal, so. Unless you guys have anything to add.
I'm gonna go back. You done, you done up that now?
I'm done with that unless you guys have questions. I'll, I'll let you kind of go back to those.
Move it back into your rivers, still over here.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, monthly reports. Okay, monthly reports, good trip.
Okay, I got a sewer adjustment for Danny Roberts for a hundred dollars and seven cents. The bathroom wall was leaking, signed approval for the sewer adjustment.
I think I mentioned to approve the sewer adjustment for Danny Roberts for a hundred dollars, seven cents.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Dustin second, on favor.
Mine right.
Okay, next thing, you should have a copy from voice. I think I gave you guys a copy. Approval of the yearly voice invoice for computer software, that's for my, my software. The total was twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Me and Derek sit down. And we've got, got it divided into four different funds. CCIF for two thousand, water for three thousand, three ninety-one sixty-six. Sewer for three thousand, three ninety-one sixty-seven, and general, three thousand, three ninety-one sixty-seven. Need approval to pay for this.
Motion to pray voice, pray voice.
I'm going to motion, uh, to pay the voice invoice. I'll second.
Second, all favor.
Okay.
Okay, just to let you know. The twenty twenty-six budget, the public, the public meeting is September the eighth. The adoption meeting is October thirteenth, that's the dates of our council meeting. Um, me and Derek's got a DLGF budget workshop this Thursday, July the seventeenth. Um, then the ILMCT annual conference and State Board of Account School. Um, is August the tenth through the fourteenth, and Derek already approved me going, and Tammy is keeping the office open. You guys have any problems with that? Okay, just wanna make sure. Um, just for heads up, the AIM ideal summit, which some of us go to. Is Tuesday, October the twenty-first through Thursday, the twenty-third, a French schlick. So if you need to make some vacation or something, that's the dates. Um, I'll be on vacation July the twenty-fifth. And, uh, me and Derek's looked over, um, appropriations. Report, and we're gonna have to do some additional appropriations. And we'll plan on doing that after September eighth council meeting. And you guys are, have already received your financial report, so. The general fund balance is two million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-one. And eighty-two cents. What this includes the community crossing with three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Three hundred and nine, five hundred and fifty cents. Water operating balance is one hundred and forty-six thousand, five seven, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. And the sewer operating fund is two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. And that's all I thought. Let you guys go.
Anything else, Rita?
Right, uh, fire department. David, um, your, uh, monthly report for June was handed out. You guys should have copies of that now. I do want to go back and touch on the cardiac arrest that we had. On June third. Just kind of want to mention how big of an event that was, how important early CPR documentation is. You know, without having everybody there, that, that would be a totally different outcome. Um, since then, the Legion has, I believe it was already in process.
It was already there, it was in the bathroom, we just got it.
Yeah, it was never even get it open yet.
I knew that it was in process for sure. They have purchased an AED. And Lisa and I went over a couple of weeks ago and did an AED training there. To make sure it was set up, running, um, operational, so just grab it out of the cabinet, and it's ready to go. We've offered also, she's a CPR instructor, to go over there and do CPR, if anybody would like to do that, and look back from that. I knew that there's, there was a couple of people that brought it up, that, that option is available, we'd gladly go do that, to help out, so.
You guys want to do a training?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was mind building with our town group, and she can definitely get that scheduled, we can get that ready, so just, um. Let us know when we can, we can schedule it, so.
Do we have those at the ball fields?
What's that?
ADs, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. No matter who checks in, or, I'm assuming the ball league does.
Jeremy Guts or anything.
I'm hoping they're checking it.
I just wanted to make sure that we had.
I'm hoping they're checking them at least monthly.
I would, I would assume, I've checked up.
Yeah, just to make sure they're still operational, so.
This is the company that's checking.
What's that?
The company you're buying from? I felt like that was part of ours, that they were gonna check.
Now, usually they're, the newer ones are pretty simple, they, you just look at them and if they've got an X, you need to do something. You need to replace the batteries of that, um, they're pretty simple, so, I know the one in the Legion, it's, it's the one the fire department has, they place it. Either a green checkmark or a red X, so. And then the batteries are thirty-five bucks if you gotta replace it. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions for us.
No. Uh, police department. Josh isn't here. I don't think so. I'd like to start seeing, so at least one of them here comes out. Yeah, yeah.
It's disgusting.
I have a question, I'd like to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I pass that on.
Eleven minutes.
Yeah. You have a patient, Charlie?
Um, I don't have much. As you guys know, I was out of town for two weeks and I kind of let them. Figure out their own thing and they did pretty good. Everything stayed alive.
I sold all of them. Yeah, alright. Main Street, Danny?
Not too much to talk about. Uh, the muncha lunch just kept us pretty busy. I've kind of stepped in with Jared and been helping him more with the shopping and the setting up and introducing. Well, helping the, the newer folks that haven't done it before to figure it out, and. It doesn't seem like it's a lot of work, but it is, so. And we've been going, um, to Carol Hughes House for Carpet Store and getting goods from her. So that's keeping us busy. Um, Main Street has their reporting documents due, so I'll be working on that tomorrow. Let's do it tomorrow by noon.
And anything, Karen? Legal, John?
Yeah, um, you have just a minute I'd like to talk with you about. I think I sent you, sent an email to Derek, which I think he was gonna distribute to you all about lit funding as it goes forward. In the future. So, today. Someone's changed, um. The, um. Following text messages. With Anthony Smart. I'm sorry, not with it, with Andy Vaughn in this store. And I want to, uh, we only take a moment, but I think it's best I just read them to you. You guys are okay with this. Against the background of, um, what I sent you. So it started, uh, this morning around noon, or this afternoon. Commissioners are agreeable to a thirty percent reduction in the. Provisions that are in front of them now. And no increases to get us from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. So they had talked about reducing what they had asked from, um. Twenty percent, now they've said thirty percent. That would then mean that in this fiscal year, uh, next in twenty twenty-seven, Hillsborough will pay annually twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Reference they had originally asked for thirty-two thousand, forty-six dollars and seventy cents for this year alone. Um, Derek, he might have this correct, but he says, uh, Kevin Turner talked to Derek about it, apparently Derek is, um. Balking because this is a county problem. Obviously, that's not the reaction we were hoping for, but I also realize he isn't a decision maker anyway, just wanted to give you a heads up. And I just said, we'll talk it over tonight. I mean, Frank and I had the same reaction. Um, cause Derek led you. Then, um, right away I got the county is going to be eating an additional eight hundred thousand between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven scenario. Taking two hundred and seventy thousand annually away from cities and towns and paying it out county general, so I guess that's what is adding up for all of us. Trying to cut everyone a break, and in exchange, looking for stable agreements to get us through twenty twenty-seven before the lit system gets blown up. We also want everyone to continue working on getting the one dollar monthly raise to two dollars a state. And then. I didn't say it, four oh five, I got this. In twenty twenty-four, the town got one hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and three cents of riverboat money from the county. No one has even floated the idea of getting rid of that, we wanted to point out that the county shares a good amount of money with Hillsborough. When the lit system gets blown up. Though, certified shares, seventy-eight thousand, four sixteen in twenty twenty-five, and public safety, fifty-eight thousand, seven thirty in twenty twenty-five distributions will be going away. For the town to continue receiving lit distribution starting in twenty twenty-eight. Aurora and the towns will have to ask county council to impose an additional lit on their behalf. That's why we're looking to cut a deal to get us through twenty twenty-seven, because we are all going to be reevalu- reevaluating things starting in twenty twenty-eight. So I responded, I hope I didn't get ahead of you guys here, I, I changed it and cut it down a couple of times. Andy, perhaps no one has floated the idea of holding back on the riverboat money. But I'm also certain that it hasn't gone unnoticed by the county either. Now we appear to be dependent also on the county for lit distributions in twenty twenty-eight. Sometimes you have to bend to necessity in this world, but it doesn't mean that you have to like it. My board and maybe some others may see this as a do it or else situation. I will let them know about the proposal and we'll see what they say. Then he says, I think my people recognize, this is him, that if we stop sharing locally, it's going to hurt us at the state house. I just want to make sure that sharing the riverboat amount doesn't come across as a threat in any way, because that was not my intention. Which I just simply responded, I understand, and again, I'll convey the proposal. Now, I think that's exactly what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
And I do want to just go over very briefly what I sent an email, so it looks like in, in twenty twenty-eight, the new situation would be. That the county can implement one point two percent of, uh, local income tax rate for themselves. Four percent, point four for fire protection EMS. And point two percent for non-municipal, that adds up to. Two, six, seven, one point, I'm sorry, one point eight. Um, and the non-municipal would be like libraries, things like that. Um, and that's also subject to a limit, a maximum combined rate of one point seven. So somebody along that line wouldn't get point one percent of it. He had previously indicated that would almost certainly be the non-municipal. The maximum combined rate, so the way the law reads now, municipal population, municipalities, municipalities with populations of at least thirty-five hundred dollars, you put their own one point two percent in. But those with less than, um, can get one point two percent, but they have to ask the county for it. And the maximum combined expenditure rate by taxpayer is two point nine, so, you know, if they put their. One point seven in, then we can get the whole one point two. Now, Andy claimed, and I, I'm not, I'm able to see the legislation, I'm still looking. Did he claim they even get to keep a percentage, a large percentage of that hundred thirty-five hundred? That we would get, so we asked one point two, they get to keep that. Or portions of it. So, look, I, I think it's a direct threat on the riverboat money. And I just feel like I have to tell you. What I didn't do, I wrote, what I originally wrote was, look. This damn thing was packaged and sold to us, and that we would all get a distribution of riverboat money in order, in order to get us to boat this thing. And we did it by our local agreement for years, and the courts ruled that's not lawful, we couldn't do it, and the legislature fixed it. And the way they fixed it was to write a statute that said it would go to the county and they may share, because the politics in twenty seventeen, they did share. And I took that out. Cause I wanted to talk to you about it. And I didn't want to. Fire off, but that's opposing facts. And I, I don't know what you guys want to do about this, I, I will tell you that. A week ago, when this first came up for sale, and I sent out that email, wherever that was. I did speak to Eric Baskin about it, and he told me that there are a lot of, there's a lot of people that in general aren't totally happy with that package. But since it's not gonna be implemented till twenty twenty-eight, there is definitely gonna be some tinkering, and this is probably not the final iteration of it. So. I don't know, I. I do think there's one thing that he did allude to, and he's right, and I'm talking to our actual representatives, they, they are seriously concerned. I think any real controversy. That found its way back up Indianapolis, you know, would endanger riverboat money, period. So I don't know if the county really believes. That if they're confronted on that issue head up, if they're really going to go through it, take that risk. So that's something for you guys to consider, to figure out what our, yeah, what our strategy should be. But I, I just look. This crap came up last year, this stuff, and I had a similar exchange with Andy, which was a lot more direct regardless of Leon. And they had him come in and say, hey, we didn't mean that, and we're sorry. You know, to me, I mean, part of my job, I do, for you guys is. I can defend you, say things, but if I get over my skis, the board can say, well, no, that's not really what we meant. And Andy may be doing the same thing, but my guess is that didn't get told me without. To that term. I don't mean anything bad about any of them, they gotta protect themselves and do their thing. I don't know how it would come out. So, will they feel like they just take it from the politics of that?
Like you say, I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're gonna risk, risk losing the riverboat money themselves, if they try to start a controversy up in your eyes, but I think, I think.
I certainly know that both here and Senator Maxwell told me that, look, we really think that the best thing to do is that really kept on the stage, best of can. But I, I don't know, I, I could also, though, however, see them saying, well, we just aren't gonna implement that one point two percent for you guys if you wanted to fund your own. Which would mean we'd have to find our money elsewhere than there. So, I'm telling you, so you can begin to plan and know what they may say, now, they're asking for the money. They want the money. And my understanding is, right now, everybody has paid for now. Other than, say, Leon has paid. And we have paid, apparently more seldom than they hadn't paid last week, only for this year, but last time.
But more sales was not that high, I.
No, it's not nearly this much. It's a hit for them, but it's not nearly this much, and they don't fund as much as we do. Green, Greendale's under contract, and so they were gonna pay regardless. Um, and as are Lawrenceburg and Laura and others. And so I don't know, uh. My understanding is Carstader's opinion hasn't changed, he's just under contract. Haven't been able to talk to Aurora because Jared, he's been out of town. Lawrenceburg, I mean, she knows about Lawrenceburg. So, I don't think, I don't think they want a big political fight over it, but maybe they figured that we just have a little one hundred hits. Cause I mentioned both, and I do take that as a good, but. So, I'm gonna get a phone call in the morning. Were you approving or didn't approve? My only suggestion would be, and I'm just suggest this. You know, I don't think I commit, if you guys aren't going through this this year, this is just me talking, and you guys know as much about this stuff, so I mean, I don't think I commit, I don't think I. Draw a line in the sand and say nothing to everyone, or whatever, I just think it's, no, more than is time to consider. Or whatever you want to say, I don't think I put myself in any kind of call.
If we didn't get the one point two percent, how, what does that amount to?
I think we get about fifty-five thousand dollars a year in that, in lit funding.
We mostly fund, well, it's just rather, I know you don't know.
Basically, the police department.
It's mostly the police department, fun, training, materials, and I'm sure it's some stuff that's out there.
Yeah, right, yeah, it helps, it helps our general funds, we're not paying everything for the police. Yeah, right. It helps, it helps our general funds or our bank and everything for the police department out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So if they're going to take that away, would we be better off to go and pay the twenty-two thousand?
That's one thing to think about.
I don't think I would take the lit either myself because, because our police department covers a lot out here and then, then if we're, if we're, if we're going to lose a guy because of them taking our lit money, they're not going to have the coverage out here they normally have anywhere. So that's another.
I think an important person in this whole thing, now I'm just thinking about council obviously is really important here and the commissioners are important. I mean, I think that, again, I don't mean anything bad about what I'm saying, but I think Jim Thatcher will make the necessary votes and will only be not make that vote if he thinks they're not using the riverboat. I think, and I think he might well not to a extent. I, I would think that we can make some inroads with our own commission. You know, it's from our area. And I don't know what Dwayne Bishop's going to do from up there, but I do know that the town of St. Leon will have the same view that you guys do and although they don't matter. They, they don't matter on the money side, they may matter on the voting side. So as far as council goes, you know, I, I just don't know how that'll play out.
So you feel like we should probably just let them know that we're considering?
Well.
Would be our best action.
If, I guess what I'm saying is if you guys decide that you're not going to pay this month, I'm just saying I would not, tonight, I don't think I would go ahead and draw a line. I leave them, I let them twist them and then, I wouldn't tell them what I'm gonna do. I let them twist them a little bit. You guys dumped this on us, you know, we got a little bit about a week ago and then you dumped this stuff on us today. And, you know, I think it, while I can, I think I can express this without starting some kind of war, I could see Andy, regardless of what you say here. As I told you, our board did take it as a do or else. And, and they're going, or something of that nature. I don't even have to assign that much, but I think they need to be, you know, if we're not going to pay it, then I think, I just don't think we ought to draw a line and send it. Because Tim, I get what you're saying, I think you're probably right. That's, I'm not sure that you're right about. Riverboat money, I think, is a big step. That lit tax? I think, I think they'll, I think we'll get paid back. And there might be other ways that they would try to pay us back too. Some of this has been around. And again, the counties, I don't mean this in a bad way, the county's working their corner. The state's cut a bunch of their funds. So they're working their corner and we're working ours. So I'm not, when I say what I'm saying, I'm representing Hillsborough. I'm not trying to throw rocks at somebody and make them a bad people. But I would not count on their tender mercies if we don't do something now and they give a chance to split it to us later. That's just my experience with county government. And really, just in general, be.
I mean, are they going to be okay to wait for another month? Will we have another meeting?
I don't think they have a ton of choice, Becky, in not being okay. Here's my take on it. Again, I don't mean anything bad about anybody. I think that, uh, I think, and it, it flashes out every now and then. I think Jim and Andy are very frustrated and we don't go along. And we are now out there pretty much sitting by ourselves.
That's what I was saying, we're probably only.
Much as I was saying.
We didn't have a contract.
They don't can.
That's, that's the thing.
You can't, they don't can.
I think we should just tell them we're considering it and see what they come back at. That's my personal opinion.
And I'm not trying to issue about what everybody's saying. I, I don't think they're going to come back with another offer. Just so you know.
You don't, you think this is it?
You notice it's the same offer that they offered to other cities and towns?
My, my understanding is it is because in, I think we should consider it on exact reason, make sure we confirm everything that's been done. But I do believe it is, when it was first presented to me and I sent that email out, I was told that they were going to do twenty percent. And they dumped, they jumped it up ten percent. So I think this is it. And of course, if they receive payment and, and they're going to credit, the people have already paid them, they told me they're going to credit them in some way. Return them, return them or credit them in some way. So they get their money. So it'd be hard for them to back out of that when they make those arrangements with other folks. I'd say it couldn't be done. They could credit there too. But I wouldn't trust their tender mercy, I'll say that.
What did we pay last year? Was it eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand, five twenty-three, thirty.
So that's literally four thousand more than we paid last year. And can we do it for a year again like we did last year?
My, you, you, I do think you could do that. The other piece of advice I'd give you is I wouldn't sign.
You don't sign any contracts yet.
Here's your money. And maybe we ought to even say a letter, send a letter saying, here's the money. We don't, what I don't want this to be is like an accord and satisfaction. So they need to understand that the payment of the money does not indicate that we agree that there's any, uh, any obligation next year.
Really, didn't Connie ask us for something last year when we paid it? I felt like there was something happened where they wanted like a, like the agreement or something that like.
Yeah, they, they wanted to agree with you and.
Like I thought they weren't going to cash the checkers. I thought we had to send them something.
That's when, remember I sent them a check and it wasn't for the full amount? They sent it back.
They'd monkeyed around with it a little bit. The, the way we can get across that one point would be to say to them, if you go that route, then what, it should be accompanied by a letter saying, uh, you know, the board cited to provide this payment this year. However, the board does not agree um, to the provisions related to fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And the board also understands that the legislature may revisit this matter and change this funding process. And so we don't believe we can commit that any agreement can be made beyond right now. And that gives you a good base because I haven't been told that, but the legislature is not, since it wasn't going to come in twenty-eight, they figured they'd monkey with it again later. So I would suggest that a letter, if you pay them anything, a letter companies that say we don't agree anything beyond this. That, that gives you options, leaves your options open to you.
I like that version, so. Just gives you that, but it doesn't put you in a corner.
I definitely don't want to sign. Unless you guys decide you're on the program, want to do it, then fine.
You see, we get for lit about fifty-five or so.
Fifty-three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me say one other word. I've been talking a lot. I'm sorry. This riverboat money thing bothers me about this is, I, I agree they don't want any stink made about it. But they have to, if you're going to play that card, they got to be convinced you're willing to make that stink.
Yep.
And that you will make that stink and you start making that stink. But when you do, you know, we endanger all of your boat money. So just keep in mind where that could, where you could be, you know, you could be singing along here pretty quick. So just, it cuts both ways like most things do. It's, it's a judgment. That's why I was kind of playing for time here.
I would not be opposed to paying it with the letter included, not signing a contract. I would not be opposed to that. Yeah, the twenty-two, four thirty-two sixteen. I would not be opposed. And then John adding a letter to it, that, you know.
I could draft a letter and give it to Derek, since I actually talked to them. You know, I don't want signing it or whoever wants to sign, but I could draft it on behalf of them.
How do you agree?
So you want to pay how much?
The twenty-two, four thirty-two sixty-nine, which is what they asked.
I, I'm going to agree that I think we pay the amount, but just for this year, that letter stating that this is just for this year. And because of the ambiguity without these, the funds are going to be handled, we wait. Because we're still talking about.
Twenty-two, four thirty-two sixteen.
I don't like either.
Yeah. I guess, hold on, was it? Yep, I'll make a motion to pay the twenty-two, four thirty-two sixty-nine with a letter included saying we are not signing a contract, we're going to revisit this in a year.
Second, I'm second, I'll be second, I'll play it.
Joe, did you say your pledge?
I was others, yeah.
Gemma's pledge?
Yeah.
And how are we going to pay this or what?
We have a line on it in our riverboat budget.
Okay, just sorry.
All right, I don't sound out of way. Okay, Derek.
Do you have anything else, John?
The AG's office. A little bit more on the EMS case. They did issue discovery that was, I thought comprehensive and, and well done. I mean, I wish it was moving faster. I think if we were locally pushing it, it would move faster. I'd like to see an inspection done and I'd keep on, you know, throwing my two cents on that when I can.
I've seen somebody in the building not too long ago.
But what the AG's office did draft was good. It was comprehensive, made sense. So, you know, it just is what it is right now. That's all I had, unless somebody had a question. Hey Derek?
I just thought, um, I don't know if you guys know this much or not, but we do, uh, we're required to do a monthly report for our sewer plant and then our water report. Um, so I just thought I'll just share some quick highlights with you all. Um, so this is kind of the report that Eric put together. This talks about how many uh, gallons of wastewater we took in for the month of June and how many we sent out. Um, and a lot of that's, um, due to, we're kind of draining the lagoons right now. I'm trying to, because Biden has put us on notice, we have to do a clean closure. It's going to take a lot of time to kind of run that water through the plant. Uh, and Eric kind of made it note right there. Um, we did have a, one of our main pumps at the sewer plant go down, so he just kind of made notes. Um, then this is kind of the daily influent, influent HR. And I can certainly get you all copies of this if anyone's interested. Um, one thing that I, I do like um, looking at is, this is our influence, so that's how much is actually going to the, to the sewer plant. And then there's also a column here on um, precipitation. So you can see on June first, we took in, um, a hundred and seven thousand gallons, but these are a million gallons. So you can see when we get, you know, we're going between eighty-five, a hundred thousand gallons. When we get a little bit of rain, we jump up to a hundred twenty thousand. We get a half inch of rain, we're at a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand. So I think it just, um, you know, just something worthwhile. You can see we got one point seven inches of rain on the twenty-sixth and we jumped up to two hundred fifteen thousand gallons at the sewer plant. So, um, just I thought it's worth pointing some of that out. Um, and then I forgot the four MROs. So the water report's not as interesting, but it does just show our, our, um, our, our daily water consumption, but it's, it's pretty consistent around, uh, you know, a hundred, a hundred twenty thousand gallons a day. So if you guys want to start getting copies of those, let me know. Otherwise I'll try to just give us a brief. So then moving on to, uh, old business. Um, so we've been talking about the job offer, the superintendent, um, I believe we're, we've all kind of got everything set, uh, kind of what Russell's terms are, kind of informally agreed to these. Um, so we, I'm just looking for formal approval on the job offer. Russell. Again, that's a thirty-one dollars an hour. The take home vehicle and then kind of waiving that bonus paid provision. And then a two-year time period on the license.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the, uh, offer of position to Russell roles for the superintendent role.
I'll second that.
Are you seconding it, I want to hear it. Congratulations, Russell. Get the work.
Um, I did have one-two-nine-one-six North Street lease agreement. We're all talked about that. Um, the only other thing I would add is let's not just have this building sitting here. I think we should go ahead and move to come up with a plan. Um, I don't know if we want to go ahead and put it in the redevelopment commission's hands, like we don't want to let over treat property. I think that's a good option. Um, unless you guys have something else in mind.
How, how did we do that before? Remember, remember when we put it out for people to bid the building? Do you remember how we did that?
Have you all been in that process? Once John, we accept the proposals for you for your deal?
I'm trying.
I was here and I remember them coming in.
Yeah.
And, you know, giving what their ideas were and stuff like that. Because I thought the one, I really liked the one, but I was the only one that liked them. And I just wondered if they ever did anything, if they're still interested, but I can't remember.
Yeah, and Becky, I'm in the same spot. I wasn't actually in a lot of the meetings where the board just talked to the individuals who were there. I'm not quite sure how we advertised it or exactly how we did that. But obviously something of that nature was done. Um, and then the board interviewed people with proposals. They came in and made proposals.
Right.
Um, and Derek, I wish, I just don't know.
Let's go back to those, um.
I think I got copies of that.
You know what I mean?
Do you want to weigh into about that before signing it over to the redevelopment then?
I, I would kind of like to do that again myself. I think so too, yeah.
I'll see if we can have that for our old student. All right, next I have the water rate ordinance. Um, so so this is ordinance forty twenty-five oh seven oh two.
Oh, one. Water rate is a one, isn't it?
Oh. My, that's a typo. I thought it was two. I, I think I changed it and I made it wrong again. It's supposed to be one. I think I put the wrong heading on it. Uh, the only thing I never even, I talked about, I don't think we addressed this ordinance was an effective date. I think Rita was one, um, we talked about having go into effect on.
I have to get in contact with voice and it takes like four weeks for them to do that and get back to me. And I would say the first is September.
Maybe, maybe the next billing period is consumption, so that if we're not.
So it wouldn't be July, it wouldn't, it would be August, I guess.
Yeah.
But the bills would go out the end of August.
New September, payable September.
Payable September, yes, because they got, they got to get some time. They, they should all set up.
Yeah, I mean, is there. Effective date should be immediately after the next billing, whenever the billing is.
Yeah.
When is the billing?
So probably what's read next week.
Billing is usually the last Friday of each month. It depends on how the month falls.
So what if we, Rita, what if we made it, what if we made it effective August one, that work?
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
And it's just an even date?
Yeah.
And we all know what it is.
Is that something you think we can just write on the ordinance or should we, we need to retype that up?
I left it blank, I thought, to the effective date, didn't I?
Uh, you got.
I got a date of passage.
Can we just line that out, but August first?
Yeah, the board should, since it's written that way and it's in front of that way, my suggestion would be if you move to, to, to accept it, that part of acceptance would be, however, we're going to affect the date of August one, then we'll just change that and have it sun.
What about putting the billing date?
The billing date's okay too. Whatever is easiest for you guys. Billing date's okay too. Whatever is easiest for you guys, I'm just trying to catch.
See, we read meters in July the twenty-fourth and then, you know.
Yeah.
So consumption is, is, is bill, is the meter, so we want to catch the consumption that occurs after July twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So really, we're, and we're doing everything inclusive of July twenty-fourth, right?
Well, then, I guess they would read the, they would read the meter and then that would generate the bill.
And, but the meter is for usage for when?
Up to that point.
Up to that day. So you could say July twenty-five.
Yeah.
You can say July twenty-fifth.
That work?
That'll be the view.
We're reading meters of twenty-fourth. So.
Next bill will start on.
Our billing date for July is July thirty-first. Our billing date for August is August twenty-ninth.
But you want to catch.
We want to catch the waters used after the breeding, so the twenty-fifth is what we're going to put to it.
Yes.
So that's the usage you want to catch, so that's my suggestion.
Yes, beginning, beginning July twenty-fifth. Yes.
I didn't think of that and I should have left that blank. I thought there was a blank spot up there, but maybe there wasn't. I, I just missed that. Yeah, see, I got effective blank.
Oh.
And I just didn't, at the bottom, I just didn't catch it, so.
Correct.
So section one there, to be one, says effect blank. So we just need to strike that language, strike that whole thing.
Strike A.
Strike A and we're good.
Section three here.
Need a motion to. Approve.
Okay.
Water rates, what, the change of section three, number one, to effective July twenty-fifth, twenty-five.
I have a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five oh seven oh one, right?
Yep.
Accept that in section three A, it will be effective date of seven twenty-five, twenty-five.
Second, Derek, I'll second, I'll favor.
Okay, so talk about the local agreement, Star Pathways updates. So we have a scheduled public open house for July twenty-eighth at the Civic Center. This is kind of, we're going to gather some last feedback again on kind of the sidewalk portion of it. We're going to present the alternatives. And then we'd like to schedule a council working session sometime shortly after that. So that we can meet with engineers and say, all right, this is what we're going to apply for. This is, this is going to have to happen relatively quickly. Application, I think, due October first. So we kind of need to have our plan together early August so they can start their, their cost estimates gathering together for the application. So, one, that's going to be at six P M on the twenty-eighth.
Sunday, Tuesday?
No, that's a Monday.
I guess Civic Center already wins it out and everything.
Yes, I've already arranged for that to be written out. You guys have preferences on the working session? If you want to do the following Monday, the fourth.
I, I'm, I'm up here, I'm on.
I think the fourth is open house for the school board.
Correct.
Here for Delphine.
Um, anytime.
Yeah, I think it starts at five thirty, right?
Yeah.
I'd be.
Maybe six-thirty, sorry, like.
No, I can ask him if we want to do early on the eleventh. I don't know if that's even any better for y'all before the meeting. I don't recall a beck.
I have to look, I don't know. I haven't looked at my, I, schools are getting ready to start. I need to look at the schedule. That, you know, I, I can't say right this second. Because I haven't looked at it. What's going on?
You guys can get back with me, maybe I'll be.
What, what's the tentative date, Monday, the?
August fourth.
The engineers just asked for sometime in early August after the public meeting.
Does it have to be a Monday? Do we do a different? Oh, it has to be a Monday. My bad.
So why she want to really wait that late, ten o'clock?
Not that late. I'm in my jam, he's by there.
Okay. So just get back with me on that date, I guess, and all that our engineers know. And then we have the HWC engineering contract, so that's the engineer agreement. And I honestly have not had as much time to get this as I would have liked. I'm hesitant to just suggest passing this right now. But we don't have a lot of time to pass it either. This, the contract for HWC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
John, I assume you probably haven't had a chance to look at this all either.
I haven't. Is this one of those task order contracts or is it no, just, just limited to specific?
It's kind of the task order thing.
Those are fairly standard form contracts. I know you're aware of that. But is it, is it for a month sum on tasks?
No.
It's not, so it's an hourly?
Some of them are lump sum, but some of them.
Right.
Right there, right there. So again, this is eighty percent funded through the grant. You would be responsible for twenty percent of that. I think typically there are, there is room for negotiation if you're asked. But, I mean, and some of this stuff, I don't even think we would, I mean, we're not even, these lower things, I mean, we're a long ways from, I would personally prefer they don't even be in here yet, but I think our, I think our grant administrator thought they probably should be. That way we could have them for our cost estimate when we submit our application for the grant that, say these are, are no fees. This is what, you know, we're asking for eighty percent to be funded.
That's provided, it shouldn't seem to fix payment now. Some of them don't have a cap on them like that, so that's not bad. It's right there.
I don't know if we want to wait. I mean, I would say probably schedule a meeting within a week. We don't really have to have at least three people there, though. We don't all have to be there. We can talk about it individually and I can try to negotiate with them a little bit.
If you got room to negotiate for, I'm there, it's a pretty, sound pretty recent.
Well, it's for, what was it, one point two million dollars in work? So there. That was twenty percent. That seems a little high, to be honest with you. I don't think it's, it's a lot of work. I mean, it is a federal project. And it's, you know, over eighteen point one month periods, so I don't know, maybe they're sending some inflation or something. I don't know.
Doesn't have the meaning, we could be to call in.
We could always have, we could always do a special meeting, but we'd have to have at least three council members present.
So are you thinking we should approve it or are you thinking we should wait? What do you think? You tell us. Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like a little more time just to read through it, honestly. I really would. It's a big number.
Yeah.
You're not, I'll give it up, the time it needs.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys think you're able, I was ready to get together at some point and it can be, it can be whatever.
I'm pretty good with the image, my first of August, so, you know, I probably could do it somehow.
Correct.
And it's on Tuesday, the virtual sixth, so if it's going to be a different day, I'd have to be here later.
Right. And I mean, it could be a quick in and out thing. You know, we could kind of talk and make sure we're all on the same page beforehand and come.
I'd be here by any day.
The only thing, it'd be up to forty-eight hour notice.
Right.
So. Except for next Monday, next Monday, I gotta call.
Do you want to go ahead and set the date?
That'd be nice to go ahead and set it so I can schedule, so I can, and I can let them know too that I just, you know, I'm sorry, but this is where we're.
It's good for you guys. I can't set. Yeah, but I mean, if, other, for work, though, I mean, if that happens, that happens.
It's good. Work wise, Mondays, I could get here by six-thirty. Wednesday, six-thirty. Tuesday, at any time after one. But if we're going to do it on Monday, it'll be up to six-thirty for me.
I can do Monday.
I can, next Monday, right?
That's my first.
Yeah.
Oh. And that leaves Charlie to be here.
I have to take Kim for a knee replacement next Monday. Um, I just tell her I have to leave.
Well, she's going to be here over there.
Yeah. Yeah, I forgot. I knew something was going on that day. I'm going to let it go on. I have to take, Kim's giving a knee replacement. I have to take her. But I should be okay.
What time she was?
She don't know. They don't tell her till the Friday before.
Oh, okay.
They don't let her know. They, they will not schedule till, till the time until the Friday before. But I would think by six-thirty, I should be able to be here.
Let's get it up for six-thirty, it's next Monday.
So it should be really quick. I mean, I think it could be. And then I was expecting to get the contract proposal from Clark Deeds, who's going to be working on the North Street project. Last I checked, they had not sent that in yet, but that one's not near the rush. That's an extended timeline for that project. But the other one's a little, little quicker. Talk about the other two. There's no other questions or comments under old business. I'll move into new business. We have salary ordinance twenty-two-five oh seven oh two. So this is, you know, this has Russell included. As I mentioned, we also, since Mike and Brian passed their sewer license, since this is our last one, I did, should make that change to reflect what they're actually getting paid. And then I, I've kind of tweaked around where some people were getting paid from, just because we were kind of over budgeted on the public safety, like wind impacts and on the general fund. That's all we've changed for that.
Anybody got any questions?
You sent this to us, didn't you?
I did.
I thought I read it.
Yes, I believe, did you see the one, did it have your stuff in it? Yes, yeah. This will, I might not have had your stuff in it yet. But I got, so we got the hourly rate, your overtime wage, your Sunday wage, reimbursement, and then I got subject to the terms of the group job offer.
Okay.
And then I got where your position stayed from. But the one you seen, everything else should have been the same, as far as all the other benefits.
Okay.
So when are you starting?
Tomorrow.
You will, oh, okay. That works.
I was hoping to start today, but.
Had to get the okey-dokey.
Yeah.
Could volunteer today.
Do we have a motion to approve the salary ordinance? I'll make a motion to approve the salary ordinance, twenty-two-five oh seven, is it supposed to be oh one?
So this is supposed to be oh two.
Okay, okay, oh two, oh two, okay. That's the made a motion.
I'll second it.
Are you second, I'll favor?
I'm.
Last I got, the park board and I, we've been working on a application to the American Community Foundation for pickleball basketball courts at the park. Their, their application deadline is August fourth, so we kind of, I'm trying to get all our documents together so we can submit. That's a hundred thousand dollar grant. The park board, we talked about putting twenty thousand dollars from the park fund toward the project. So I just need kind of the approval from you all to submit that application to the American Community Foundation.
Who's it going?
Yeah, so this is Oak Street, this is front slash Arlington, so just kind of be in that front corner there.
I just.
So the soccer field there.
I had a general question just on the layout. Is there any specific reason why they kind of did a diagonal like that? Do they have justification on that or any rationale?
Just, I, I guess it would fit kind of the way that, I guess there's kind of a ditch that goes between there.
That's what I was looking at. We, I was on my own last week. I was looking, I was like, they have it. There was some reason they did it.
Yeah. I can't remember exactly why we settled on it.
Yeah. It just seems like it eats up a little bit more space.
Yeah, it seemed that way to me too.
Set it, just how the rest of the, the, the field soccer field lays, it kind of.
So it's going to be like Oak Street here is going to be right here? Like Oak Street right here is going to be right here?
Right enough, right there.
So like I can just run right over that?
Yeah, yeah.
The way that the package is set up is it's kind of like we did the road project, the water line is the base, it's the pickleball court. And then we bussed them to give us a price for the basketball court and then another price for this kind of sidewalk connection. So that way, if it gets over that dollar amount, we just decline it and kind of stay with our, our point of all of it.
So this is kind of probably an ignorant question, but is the park board, are they, do they handle the soccer fields and all that as well or where is that?
What do you mean by handle?
Well, so as far as the layout is concerned, because I think you're going to consume one of the soccer fields by doing this.
So we're not supposed to.
Okay.
So that's all done through the S.A. Soccer Organization.
Okay.
They have a rep, uh, she's actually at every park board meeting, but maybe a few exceptions. And we've asked them, then our, our engineers have been, you know, they've, they've been asked to scale all this in and make sure we got enough space for, for seating and all that sort of stuff. I can't remember if it was ten or fifteen feet, I think they left. So that, you know, people could still sit around it and they would still be able to fit within the space.
I'll make a motion to approve. Applying for the grant through German County Community Foundation support for the pickleball basketball courts in the park. I'll second it.
Make a motion, you're a second, I'll favor.
So I might, I might have to have you sign a letter, Tim, by the time we fly.
I have one thing. I just got word that Rob resigned effectively now from the straight and he is our president, so. I don't know what will happen to you. No. Yeah, I mean, I'm too, but, so you know.
What's the criteria of the?
Well, I will have to look at our bylaws and see.
All right. Anybody have anything else? I just have one question. I was going to ask John if he was here, but you don't. I don't know, do we have any special one that's the rent thing, throws electric bikes that run around town all the time? There's five or six of them running around and they don't pay any attention to anybody. They're one side of the road together and they drive, don't bother and stop. Somebody's going to get, somebody almost got hit just the other day.
It's tapping that my way too.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to get smoked because they don't stop, stop signs or anything.
And the one way we went street, we have a town coming to the Legion. They're going the wrong way.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
They are, they're coming around, they was straight down there.
I didn't know we had any special ordinance on or what.
And I'm not watching people walking.
He's, he's starting.
Well, I would think.
This more, these things, so Alex more than anybody, probably, we, we, we did.
I would think they should obey the.
Yeah, but they still, yeah, they still abide by the traffic laws, I think, but. But they run from one side of the street to the other, back and forth for the phone cars.
Down our street. And like at 11 o'clock at night.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Do they have lights on those things?
Some of them do, some of them don't.
So.
It's not 1980.
That's something else I wanted to talk about.
Well, my parents were the Legion.
Yeah, I'd like to have one of, at least one of them to show up for each. Anybody got anything else?
Nope, I'll make a motion to. Oh, wait.
Well, I don't, yeah, I just want to tell everybody that I appreciate the, you know, coming to a head and meeting, you know, coming to an agreement. Really appreciate it and I'm really excited to have this opportunity. I'm glad we could all come to, you know.
It's great, we're very happy to have you.
Yeah, thank you, I'm very anxious to get started and I gotta lie a little bit, I almost passed up it, I'm sure I'll.
You'll be fine. They're good, but they're the guys, you'll be fine.
So you want to do, you're just, you know, you have to express my thanks.
Yep.
It's only human nature to be a little bit nervous.
Not something that wrong, you know.
So again, I'll make a motion.
And I can second that.
Your name is, you second, all favor.
I'm sure Dean will be there.
You've had all the members, right? You know, Charlie Callen, Becky Bryman.
I don't think.
I know Charlie from the restaurant.
Yeah.